Okay, it is 7 o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all. Okay, um, good evening Cheryl. Do you mind doing roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Breckin Kinser.
Present.
Councilmember Jimmy Cornigay.
Present.
Councilmember Jeff Nolan.
Present.
Councilmember Judith Dunn.
Yep.
Councilmember Carl DeYoung.
Present.
Councilmember Jared Couse and Councilmember Paula Kelly.
All right. So I do know that Paula is, she has to be excused. She is at a conference and Jared, the same, he is at training. So do I have a motion?
Yes, I would like to move that we excuse the absences of Jared and Paula.
Okay. I had a motion by Councilwoman Dunn and seconded by Councilwoman Kinser. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I am now looking for an approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
All right. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I had a motion by Councilwoman Cornigay and seconded by Councilwoman Kinser. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now the consent agenda, items 1 through 5. Looking for a motion.
I move to approve agenda items 1 through 5.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Cornigay, seconded by Councilwoman Dunn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So, um, tonight we actually have a presentation, but also I want to do an acknowledgement to the City of Waukegan Fire Department as they have for over the past, like, gosh, almost 30 years, I know it's been since 1990, been sponsoring the Give Burn a Boot fundraiser. They have raised over that time $364,000 and last year alone, they raised $34,000. And something that I want to share here, and actually, may I have Josh and Bobby come up?
So something that maybe you don't know, that actually I just kind of became aware of, is that since 1990, the fire department has been receiving a plaque that shows the, it's actually the Burn Children's Recovery Foundation, their appreciation for the money hence that they have raised for their program. And I think they're going to talk about the camp that that money goes to, is that correct? So I just wanted to make you aware of that because it was something that I wasn't aware of, something that they do every year. And they actually have, the fundraiser coming up at the end of next month, and I think they're going to talk about that as well and extend the invitation. So will you welcome Josh and Bobby? Congratulations to the fire department.
So just, so just a little bit of history. The Burn Children Recovery Foundation was formed in 1989 by Michael Mathis, who was burned as a young child. So, kind of how this all happens, a real brief story about Michael, it was, I think he was around 11 or 12 years old, was at a camp out with some friends, and one of the friends grabs some gasoline and threw it on fire. So Mike, growing up as a young child, he burned a struggle of loss, not seeing what it was to be a young child, having to deal with this, and thought, I can make a good out of that. So Mike started the Burn Children Recovery Foundation, which has two, two aspects to it. Camp events, which is held every year in August up at Lake Sandmish at Camp Boozaboo. This year, there were 64 children, kids from about the ages of, I believe, 8 to 17, all over the country. These kids go in and apply online and come to this camp, and all the money that we raise along with multiple other organizations throughout the state pay for these kids with no expense that they come to the camp. So, the second of it is, there's a house, it's the Phoenix Recovery House located in Everett, the tent bedroom house, that's managed by volunteers, Mike himself and several other people. So kids can come in and actually stay there on a limited basis to get some counseling and things of that nature. Just made a couple quick notes on this, and I think I covered most of it. Kind of a shocking number, there's over 280,000 kids annually in the United States of Burn at different levels. I've been going to camp since 1991. Chief Plainer was here when Mike came to our organization and said, hey, would you guys like to help out? The City of Waukegan Fire Department was the first organization to come to the aid of the Phoenix Foundation and started raising money. And we've been doing it every year, do the community center, one night, four hours, started out, I believe, as a court of fire with RAPA. And since then, it's, I don't know what the rate of that was, $800, I think, last year was just a little over $30,000 as well. 100% of the proceeds go to this organization and help with this, if you can. Put together just a real quick presentation, you can kind of see some of the things that go on there in different levels. I think there were 12 or 13 counselors this year, started out as attendees of young age, and have gone through the whole process, and now they're counselors, they come back every year. So, just a few things, most of you that can read that, just a thank you letter from one of the kids. Some kids are lost in a land of no hope and depression, but because of the hope, because your hope has been restored, the depression lost, now some of us look forward to school, the mall, et cetera. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you. A lot of these kids, they just, they just want to be kids and be accepted. So this is Michael Mathis and his wife Kathleen. Mike is gone, he is at almost every single fundraising event anywhere in the state of Washington to raise the money for him at different levels, whether it's pancake feed to big golf tournaments, Mike, I don't know, highway desert. This is our presentation this year where we were given the award, $34,491.24 that we raised last year, for a total of over $30,000. Some of the kids at camp, some of our firefighters, there's Julie down here with some of the kids as well. We go up on Monday of camp, so camp starts on Sunday, big opening ceremonies, more Harley-Davidson's there than you'll see a Hoister Run, seems like. But we go up to the fire department the day, Monday, do a bunch of fun activities with the kids when we say we're going to be doing this as well. You can see through some of these pictures, just the smiles of the kids down there, that's what it's all about. Again, this is Mike's big thing, thanks for coming. I'm going to turn it over to Bobby here, he's going to talk a little bit about the fundraiser coming up here at the end of the month, or end of October, I guess. We've got a couple weeks, no pressure.
So just to touch up on a couple things that Josh was talking about with the Burn Children's Foundation. They help not just bring tons of kids to camp every year, they help with the parent's side, the financial side. You know, some of these parents, you know, they lost everything. They live in, you know, their cars, motor homes, whatnot, so they help pay for bills. And they take the money and they, they help find a place for the family until they get back on their feet. A lot of these kids are all over the United States, Chicago, a lot of kids are from Texas, Wyoming, New Jersey, California, here in Washington. And most of these kids, they all have to, they all have to meet a standard, right? They have to still get good grades in school, they have, still have to, you know, be good, not getting in trouble. But some of them, a couple of the kids up on the screen there were from Chicago, you know, the hard, you know, parts of Chicago. And so what the camp does, they help them stay out of trouble by putting them into baseball or football or other sports activities that their parents can't afford. So that camp helps them out with that as well. But, so, it's kind of nice, Josh and Dean and Frank have been carrying this on and kind of yet passed the torch to me, and last few years, we've been making more and more money every year for these kids. It's something dear to me and everybody here at the department. So we are doing our Burn Auction Dance here, October 26th, here at the City of Waukegan Community Center. We're going to have live auction, silent auction. It's going to be close to Halloween, so we're doing a costume contest. We're going to have raffles, games. It's $10 a ticket to get in, and that provides for food and just fun entertainment. I'm not sure if anybody of you have came to the event before, but if you have, you know, it's, it's a pretty fun, it's a pretty fun gig. Yeah, they, like Josh was saying, these kids also get helped with counseling and social reentering into the society. That's the biggest thing. If you ever get to hear Mike speak, it's, when he was growing up, he went to Middledale High School, and he was picked on almost daily. So he wanted a spot for these kids to come and be kids and not have to worry about getting picked on. So, you know, I think we've all kind of helped out with that, so. It's really all I got. Any questions?
Yeah. Is there any questions from the council? Any comments?
Just a real quick, to show off how far this organization goes, a child here, I think a couple of years ago, got online and signed up for camp without his parents knowing about it. He'd heard about it and wanted to go. Some connections got made. Parent, the mother, surviving mother, was real reluctant to put her child on a plane and fly him across the country. So the foundation put a volunteer and flew him back there, met up with him, flew him back, flew back to drop him back off and came back again.
Wow.
And then they, they really go out of their way to make sure that these kids are living a happy, productive life, so.
Wow. Well, I think it's remarkable what you do. I went last year, you're right, it's a lot of fun. There's a lot of people from around the community who come. It's just a good time, and at the same time, it's raising a lot of great money for a good cause. I think it's awesome that you being their heroes are actually doing this and then also go to the camp. That's tremendous. I'm sure that there are not words that can explain what that means to children.
You know, and the biggest thing for us is education, educating whoever we can talk to about the camp. The second week of August, on Sunday, is opening ceremony, and that's open to anybody in the public. Anybody can show up. Like Josh was saying, we have our own City of Waukegan Day where we hang out with the kids and have fun and cook dinner.
So you're all invited.
You're all invited, so.
Send a memo out ahead of time.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, oh, one moment, one moment.
I have a question, real quick. Your presentation actually brought a lot more to light than I really knew about where the money goes. And I'm wondering if you would consider maybe reaching out to the newspaper and getting an article out about it to just increase awareness to the community? Because we know it goes to kids, but this just opened my eyes quite a bit more about what it's all about, so.
No, that would be great if you could do that, because our big thing is sharing the word and letting people know that, you know, different organizations that are out there and what it does, so, or accept the donation. And we'd love to see everybody there. And, something really quick, a lot of people say, well, what is, is this money really going to the kids, going to the organization? Yes, it is going to, straight to the kids. 100% of the proceeds that we get and all the other individuals that raise money for this, go straight to, go straight to the camp itself. Michael Mathis does not take any money and pay himself, the counselors don't get paid, everybody's strictly volunteer, and 100% of the proceeds go straight to the kids and to the organization and what they're trying to raise money for.
Extraordinary. Great. Yes.
Actually, now I have a question.
Okay.
I was wondering how the kids get here from, like, say, from Chicago? I mean, how does it typically work?
So, that, that's part of the proceeds that they do, they, they raise, the money that they raise every year. They take some of that money and they use that to buy plane tickets. So the kids and their parents have no expense, so they go pick them up, they put them on a bus, bring them over here, and then fly them back home wherever they go. They usually will send one counselor to a state and have to bring however many kids back from that state, or if, Mike is really huge onto family, so he tries to encourage their families to come back with them. That no, always doesn't get to happen, but he does try to encourage that, to bring the family, the sisters, the brothers, and everybody that was affected by, you know, this event in their life, so.
Yeah, it's a remarkable program. Thank you very much for presenting.
Thank you.
Okay. And so now we're going to go into staff reports, and we're going to start off actually with our code enforcement officer, Laura Carr.
I'm going to do my, this is my only part of the staff report tonight, is Laura. And this kind of goes along with the presentation that Sergeant Harris made. Officer Carr does her work in conjunction with a lot of his proactive work. When we're having an issue, we attack it from the criminal angle as well as a code enforcement angle, and Laura is the master at that. And she works with John on a lot of things on that and works with Aaron, so it's kind of a team effort, so you have Laura.
All right.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Sorry to have my back to some of you. It's a little weird up here. Thanks for asking about the wild and crazy world of code enforcement. It's very exciting. I've been with the city since May of 2014. Never a dull day, never a dull moment. I never know what I'm going to be doing any particular day when I come in. I have a plan and that never works out. So, first slide shows, I'll get used to the clicker in a second. Okay. I hit it too many times. Here is just a summary of the types of calls for service that I respond to. These are specifically my calls. As you can see, even though we're only at a partial year now in 2019, we've got three months left to the year, we're getting pretty close to last year's numbers. The number that, with enforcement and proactive enforcement, some of the numbers, such as the number of dogs impounded, returned to owner, those numbers can go down with enforcement, but it's, the highest number of calls for me will always be animal problems. And officers also respond to those, which I'll talk about a little bit later. I tow a lot of abandoned vehicles left on the street that apparently people think that's okay to do, so we remove them for them. I'm averaging about the same number of public nuisance cases a year, however, this year, you see them going up a little bit each year, and I expect to see that trend continuing, if not growing greatly. And then some miscellaneous calls. I don't assist other agencies very often, sometimes State Patrol, sometimes the county. If Burlington gets in a bind and they need an animal person, they'll invite me over. So almost the, well, it used to be almost about the same number of calls as a patrol officer, but our patrol officers are all doing double duty, and I have no idea, Chief, what their annual numbers are going to be. It's going to be off the charts, I'm sure. Animal control. I respond to nuisance domestic animals, animals running at large, animal bites, dangerous domestic animals, and note the domestic. I don't respond to, I'm not going to try to catch a bear or handle a bear. I have a catch pole, I don't have a rifle or a dart gun or any of those things, so I'm pretty useless when it comes to cougars and bear. I can stand watch and call the right people and that's, that's about it. The most difficult cases are always the animal neglect and cruelty, and I do some of the dog licensing as well, that's the proactive part. Anytime we have a dog in custody, I send them a notice, make sure you license your dog, and then if it becomes a chronic problem, they can be cited for not licensing as well as their dog running at large. We had, I think at the most, we've had maybe six or seven declared potentially dangerous and dangerous dogs in the city, and again, with enforcement keeping after it, we are down to two, I think, potentially dangerous dogs and no dangerous dogs, which is a very good thing for public safety. The pictures show my, my favorite case. She wandered up to a patrol officer and four months later, this is what we were able to do for her. She was barely alive. Now it's not going to work. Okay. We impound between 50 and 100 animals a year, all kinds. Pigs, we've had a pig, we had an iguana, chickens, roosters. I end up with roosters. If you ever need a rooster, please call me. I always have one that I can find. We've, after two years of peacock sightings and reports and complaints, we finally were able to catch and relocate the last peacock. They all didn't make it, but this guy had a happy ending at the kangaroo farm, and I haven't had any complaints since, so everyone's trucks are safe, their roofs are safe. We post on our Facebook page, as well as the city website, animal posts are always very popular. The peacock post got 721 shares and 163 comments. It was crazy. Most of my calls, again, are animal related calls. This was an interesting one, so I'll try to use the pointer here, the laser. No, that wasn't it. How do you make the laser go on? Oh, that button, there. Okay. So they are on tie outs, they got tangled in their front yard, they're both on choke chains, and this guy wants to eat me, and this guy just looks like he's really, really uncomfortable, is not quite sure what's going to happen. I just stayed in my truck and made phone calls until I got someone to come to the house and take care of it. I wasn't going to go into that. My goal is to not get hurt. Okay. Did I do something, Doug? Oh, there we go. As with a lot of my cases, they start as a call, hey, I think this person isn't taking care of their animal, or we're tired of the junk cars, or there's a lot of noise and garbage around the house. They often turn into worse situations. In this case, we had a report that there was a child possibly harming animals as a result of obtaining a search warrant. When we got into the home, we found child's bedroom, exposed outlet. These are the milder photos. I spared you all the worst of it. Refrigerator full of rotten food, the house, we were wearing booties and masks. It was horrid. And there were two adults and two children living in the home. The cats were faring better than the child. And as a result, in contacting CPS, long process, the minor child was also removed, not just the cat. So she got some help. Two years in a row, I've applied for grant funds to help with our feral cats. The first year, I trapped, took in for alter neutering surgeries, vaccinations, worm treatment, whatnot, and then either released them back into the community or rehome them if they were from a neighborhood where we didn't really want stray cats or it wasn't safe for them. 52 the first year. This year, I've only done 13, so that's a good sign. People aren't asking for help, so I have extra money and five days left. So if you have any feral cats, call me, I will trap them and try to help them out. This is funded through the specialty plates from Washington State that are the Spay New Adopter Adopt Plates through the Washington Federation of Animal Care and Control Agencies. They award funds and depending on need for communities. Public nuisances. These are probably the biggest impact on a neighborhood of any of the calls for service that I get. This is just our city code, our statement in our city code. It's the intention of the city to pursue code enforcement actively and vigorously to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. It's our intention to pursue enforcement in a way that's consistent with and adherent to and respectful of fundamental constitutional principles. I still have to follow the same rules for entry and trespass that anybody else does. I'm required to get warrants to do some things, and it can be very difficult to obtain compliance. This is one property that was a domestic violence drug house, convicted felon, high with a felony warrant, hiding in a crawl space at the attic, and this is what they did when they finally decided to leave. They threw everything out the windows. They're complicated and lengthy cases, daily, almost, calling, visiting, checking, nagging. A lot of the related issues at nuisance properties are, of course, illegal drug activity, property crimes. They're usually homes with a lot of transient people coming and going, who are dealing drugs, using drugs at the property, a lot of metal scrapping and bike stealing and car prowling. Often, the water is shut off for non-payment, so they don't have sanitary services, meaning you can't flush a toilet. There's domestic violence, vulnerable elders. We've had cases where, there's one coming up, where the elder living in the home should have been in an assisted living facility long before she was because they knew if she went, they would lose their hangout, so. Child neglect, always animals, they're always animals. I utilize a lot of different resources. Of course, whenever I go to a property like this, each visit, I have to have patrol officer with me. Our detectives work on these issues. Multiple city departments are involved. I work with Public Works, a lot with Mr. Coleman. He does my, the red tags. If we have a water shut off, that's an immediate red tag. That allows us to go and tell everyone, you've got 24 hours to vacate the home because you can't, you have no sanitary services, and it's a public health issue. And sometimes that's the best tool we have for encouraging. that's the best tool we have for encouraging people to move along and find a more suitable Utility companies. I have a buddy at all the utility companies that I can email and say, hey, do they have this? Do they have services? Is there a problem? Adult Protective Services, I do referrals all the time. Child Protective Services, they hate it when I call because I'm a real nag, and I won't give up, and I'll keep calling until someone goes out there. Utilize veterinarians, shelters. I use different ones, not just our Humane Society, depending on what kind of case I have, and our rescue people are invaluable when we have an animal that we've taken for cruelty or neglect that now needs a new home, and we just don't want to put it back in the shelter system. This was a very difficult case, a large property. In the period of 2006 to 2017, there were 100, exactly, it was funny, exactly 100 calls for service. This property, let's see, I have some more notes here on this one. Issues that I addressed here were unpermitted living spaces, occupied tents, trailers, sheds, RVs, and even a boat was being lived in. We had a death in that boat. Numerous junk vehicles. Water had been shut off multiple times. They had a septic field that was failed and had open sewage spilling onto neighboring properties. There was animal neglect, and there was a vulnerable elder who was, the culmination of this property was an all department, multiple city departments. We just lined up down the road, went in one at a time. They barricaded in the house. We had our negotiator out there. Eventually, we were able to get the senior in the home into the ambulance. One of the subjects bit one of our officers. It was a mess. It was just a mess. They went kicking and screaming, and she finally ended up getting placed in assisted living and got her health back on track. We were able to trespass them all from the property finally, and then it sat for a long time, and every time it would go up for auction at the courthouse steps, there wasn't any interest. And finally, one day, I went to one of the auctions and I stood on the courthouse steps and talked about what a lovely property it was. This is fabulous. It's gorgeous. It's a huge lot, so much potential, and someone bought it that day. So I also became a Realtor. This was one of our most recent cases, from the time that the homeowner passed away in the home, and then everybody, all the extended family and vagrants and drug dealers and drug users and minors using drugs and adults buying alcohol for minors. It was a mess. There were 21 police responses from the time that they all moved in after the homeowner died to when we learned that there was no water, and then that was an immediate red tag. Everybody get out. That was just the beginning, and then we condemned the house. The city boarded up the house to keep it safe because now it was a ghost house. Owner deceased, bank not caring. It's just another one on their rolls. So from February 18 to just this month, 173 emails, lots of phone calls. Finally, the bank stepped up, sold the house at auction, and this is what it looked like yesterday. Civil penalties are assessed when properties, property owners don't comply with the enforcement process and they don't clean up the problem or address the problems. Typically, that ends up between lawyers, so once I'm done, I let our city attorney know, and then he starts talking to the bank's lawyers, and then eventually, they reach a settlement, and our settlement in this case was $25,000. Not near what it cost us. Biggest problem for all communities right now are junk RVs being used as residences just about anywhere. They're in terrible shape, and they're showing up everywhere, and they are a plague upon every community. And I'm not talking about nice RVs and nice RV parks where people are living a lifestyle that sounds like a blast, actually. This is on the side of the road, in shopping lots, parking lots of businesses, and everywhere. We're nowhere near what Seattle is dealing with, but we are committed to not letting that happen. So this was a casual contact. I knew the RV was there. It wasn't licensed. I knew a little bit about who the people were living in this house, enough to know to ask a patrol officer to make contact with them before I did. Turned out, the subject had a felony warrant. He, two officers responded to take him into custody. He had a bag of meth in his pocket, and the other subject was trying to get the meth out of the pocket while the officers were trying to get him into custody. And I'm calling in on the radio, asking for help. They're fighting. So he ended up finally getting in custody. Our officer got injured, and then eventually, we got this cleaned up with the property owner's help. Again, a red tag, no water. They couldn't be there. Oh, and I got two pit bulls out of it as well. There's always pit bulls, it seems, that I end up having to find homes for. Again, they're difficult and expensive to abate. Often, they don't have a registration or the person who is staying in it has no legal ownership of it, and they just walk away from it, and it's our problem. The tow companies won't take them. The average tow bill is about 400 for these. It can be more than that if it's a motor home with hydraulic brakes and they have to get underneath and disconnect the driveline. It's very complicated. So now that I have a bigger truck, thank you, Nathan actually towed the little one on the left because my hitch was too high, and I got to tow that 35-footer myself with rotten tires through town, and then we wait and hope for some resources to dispose of them. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Questions?
Does counsel have any questions? You do a remarkable job.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to say, while you all have Officer Carr in front of you. Officer Carr, she just hit the high points of what she does. She's our resident expert. Fortunately, she keeps herself available for after-hours contact. She's always telling our officers, you can call for emergency animal issues or code issues. She's actually worried that we'll screw it up, so she wants us to make sure, because she's really thoughtful of, and she's got a lot of ties in the community, finding places for animals, not just going to a doggy jail, but finding homes for them as well, and all appropriately as well. We've kind of mucked it up a few times in the past. Laura's got a lot of experience in this area and in law enforcement, and you notice she doesn't have a gun, but we do have her little zapper thing, and we gave her some armor in this last year. She's like, yeah, I'm pissing a lot of people off. I kind of like to have some armor, and so we've kind of done that. She's doing the lion's share of an officer's job, and she's really, really helpful to us. So I just want to make sure you all got a chance to see that part of it, because some of that cleaning up of the streets and making the properties look nice is all due to her.
Wow. Thank you, Officer Carr. And I just want to say, for those of you in the council who haven't had opportunity to ride with Officer Carr, she's willing to make time to do that. I know Councilman DeYoung has had opportunity to do that. Have you, Cornigay? Yeah, and so have I, and it's a great experience. So I encourage you to do that. All right, so I guess we're moving on to Chief Klinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Just got the one item.
I just wanted to say with that ride-along, just the care and compassion and really the patience that Officer Carr puts for those animals, and they're held in a nice, warm area in the back, and they do get human attention from folks that come by. And again, just to echo Chief, that she has such great community outreach, and those dogs and other animals find great forever homes, and I think that's just a testament to the hard work that Officer Carr and Cedar Valley Police do. So thank you.
Just the one item this evening. Back in January of 2018, I requested from you, City Council to allow me to go ahead and apply for the FEMA grant for the assistance firefighters. And as I told you back then, we probably wouldn't hear about it until 2019. Well, we did. We finally heard about it last Friday. We were awarded the grant. It's for a total of $282,565 for new air packs. So what I'm looking for tonight, either now or under new business, is just authority to accept a grant so we can move on with the process.
All right. We can do that. Actually, it's right in front of you, counsel. It's late materials, and the recommended action is for the staff to recommend that the city council authorize the mayor to accept. So, yes.
Just a quick question. Can you tell us more about the Scott Air Packs and why they're so valuable to?
Well, the Scott Air Packs are what we wear when we enter a fire or any type of hazardous atmosphere. They come in, and we'll be looking at different sizes. They come in a 30-minute bottle, 45-minute bottle, and it's got not only the backpack, it's the face mask, and they now have a lot more things that we're required to have. They have what's called a pass device. They got automatic locators added to them so that we can find the guys in a fire if something does happen. We've had Scott before in the past, and we want to continue with Scott because we'll be able to transfer some of our equipment over and continue to use them. The average pack for the bottle, the two bottles in the pack and the masks, it runs right between $6,000 and $7,000 each. So that's why these are so spendy, and they have a life cycle of 10 years. We're on year 10, so we were happy that this came through.
So, Madam Mayor, really, I want to thank you for that, just for the safety of the folks that are keeping us safe, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the technology that is involved to do that. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to allow Cedar Valley Fire Department to apply for the 2018 Assistant Firefighters Grant for Air Pack Places.
Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, I'm out of, I took the wrong timeline. The city council authorized the mayor to accept the assistance to firefighters' grant for the amount of $269,110 and allocate the 5% matching funds to the $13,455 for a total of $282,565.
So I have a motion by Councilman DeYoung and signed by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? Owen, favor? Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. So, Mr. Coleman.
So, none of the other directors have mentioned, but budgets were due this week for all the departments, so most departments are busy completing our 2020 budgets. This week, we're due. And then I've got Catherine, our assistant planner, working on the natural hazard mitigation plan update for the city. That is an update that has to be done every five years or so. The county lasted in 2014-15, and then as they started, the fire chief got involved and then quickly threw that potato into my lap, which I then promptly gave to our new assistant planner, who is very excited to work on natural hazards because she took a course in that at university. So she's excited to be working on it and reviewing the 200-page template that they gave her. So it's gonna be a lot of work. They're requiring a lot more in the update process this cycle than they did in the previous cycle, so it's gonna take a lot more work than we had previously anticipated. So we appreciate having the assistant planner to help out with that. I think that's all I got for you tonight, though.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Freiburger.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a word on the projects going on. The sidewalk, the complete street sidewalk project, they're working on Third Street down by Shelley Shack and filling in the sidewalks on Murdoch. They have some other ramps around town they'll be starting on shortly. They have about two weeks left in that project. The Borseth-Robinson sewer that you awarded at the last meeting, the contractor is starting that work on the 30th next week, and that is a 30-day schedule to complete that work. Other than that, we have gotten back from Brown and Caldwell, our wastewater design engineer, the specs for upgrades to the aeration system at the plant, and we are requesting bids on those from suppliers. We hope to use our existing Fisher contract to do that, unless we get bids that include installation. Hope to get that work done yet this year. And also, we're getting somewhat close on our sewer comprehensive plan update. The financial analysis is underway, which we've been trying to get that done to coordinate with budget work, and we've had a preliminary look at that, and I'm doing some modifications to the timing on it. We'll be interested to bring that before you later this year, no later than November, and talk about that. We're not anticipating major rate impacts due to that this year. In fact, we're gonna assiduously avoid those, but we are gonna be seeing things coming up. I've been mentioning to you the various shortcomings our existing plant has and the things we're doing to bring those up to speed. One of those is a million-dollar project, and so we're looking at how we can do that within our existing rate revenue and reserves as far as possible in reserving future grants and loans for a plant upgrade, which we see is less than 10 years out now. But I want to take the opportunity in that process of just bringing all that stuff to your attention, and we'll have a recommendation on how to finance those short-term projects. We have one that's large enough that we may need to do something with that. So Doug and I will be working closely together on that over the next few weeks. And also, we did complete the Puget Street railroad removal. That's all paved now and open again, so we don't have to bump going over that techniques we have for quite a few years. We've got a couple more. The tracks are out on all of the rest of the road crossings. There's a couple more to lower next year out at, I think it's Central Street and Murdoch Street. We did a temporary patch on that. We're gonna lower those down as well, and that should complete all of those rail removals. That's a good thing. The track, I think I mentioned before, the track east of Township is also out, and Nathan's crew is gonna, now that they've got major projects done for the year, they're gonna be graveling and improving the old east-west Centennial Line or Cascade Line and adding some new gravel and cleaning that up. Should be a nice walking trail the rest of the way from Metcalf to the east now. And I did want to also acknowledge, we've been working on a longstanding issue. Diedrich Braun is here tonight. Diedrich, I'll just acknowledge him. He's the president, current president of the Klinger Homeowners Association, and on your consent calendar tonight was a thing that he brought to my attention here a month or two ago. The homeowners association had been paying for 20 streetlights out there for 13 years due to an error probably on the developer's part of never requesting transfer of those streetlights to the city. And so they've been doing that for quite a long time, and Diedrich brought that to my attention, and working with Aaron, you authorized repayment of three years' worth of those bills back to them. It only represents a kind of a small fraction of what's been into that, but due to gifting issues with state law, three years as far as we can go back. And so we're doing that, and Doug's gonna be putting together a warrant for that later this week, and they can use that money then to maintain their facilities a little better, and glad to work with them on that. They have a stormwater pond and some other open space requirements that do cost some money that they'll be able to use that for. money that they'll be able to use that for. That's all I had.
All right. Thank you. Very glad that we were able to correct that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you very much for making Rick Potters at the HOA.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. And one last thing, Mr. Freiburger, I have to say, I have received very, several, actually, several comments about the railroad tracks being removed, especially on Puget. The chief and I were actually doing a presentation at the senior center today, and I heard from several people who were very grateful that that has happened. So, yeah, a busy road, well-traveled, and so they appreciate it. So, thank you. Mr. Merriman.
Mayor Johnson for Mark. Just wanted to thank you again for taking less than 30 days to get out to the alleyway between Marshall and Jennings and getting that re-smoothed and re-gravelled and re-graded. And you took a look at the roots on that large red cedar out there, so neighbors are happier. Thank you for that. And also wanted to, don't know who gets the compliment for the work crew, but getting the graffiti off the fence there on State and Green Streets. So many good things happening, and thank you for being on it.
Okay, all bets set under the crew, who actually does the work, of course.
Thank you. Mr. Merriman.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Most of my comments I'd have tonight would be on the budget, and I'll be talking about those in a little bit during the public hearings. I'll go ahead and wait until then.
All right. So then, moving on to council reports. Councilman Owen.
I have a couple of things. Yesterday was proclaimed Senior Senator Day. I had the opportunity to go down and give a little presentation to the county commissioners, and that was a lot of fun. I tried to roast them. I gave them a rough time, especially a dog step. I made him show me his coffee cup and let me smell of it and make sure he wasn't hooched up. So, no, it was a good day, and the seniors enjoyed it. So that's about all I have.
Councilwoman Carnegie?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Councilwoman Kinser?
That's me.
Councilman DeYoung?
Thank you so much. Participated in the rather lengthy Skagit Watershed Council meeting in Mount Vernon as a representative of the city of Cedar Woolley and received a lot of great technical data about what's happening with our water quality and salmon enhancement and riverbank enhancement as well. There is quite a lot of data about what's happening with our river and what it's able to produce for life cycle of other marine animals out in the sound and out in the ocean. And very happy that we're participating in it, because it's a lot of good data that I think will be helpful for us moving forward for the quality of life of folks that live here. If there's any questions or anything I can supply for what we would like to see that Watershed Council helping the city with, please let me know.
Thank you for representing the city and doing that. Maybe you can give a report to the council, submit one and put it in the packet if you'd like. Thank you. Councilwoman Dunn? Nothing? Okay. I am going to move on then to the proclamations. That's actually in your packet, council members, if you wanted to. Maybe you've already read them. They are lengthy, so I'm just going to hit the highlights. The first has to do with the statement for diaper need awareness week. And this is the third year that we have participated in that. And one of the comments that she makes is that purchasing enough diapers to keep a baby or toddler clean, dry, and healthy, it can consume as much as 14% of a low-wage family's post-tax income. So it makes a difference significantly when they're able to get diapers from the diaper, oh, gosh, I can't remember the name where she has them at. And also, that diaper needs can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health in families. So we recognize that as Cedar Woolley. And I just want to say that as Mayor of Cedar Woolley, I am proclaiming the week of September 23 through the 29, which is what they requested of 2019, as diaper need awareness week in the city of Cedar Woolley, and encourage the citizens of Cedar Woolley to donate generously to the diaper banks, diaper drives, and to those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate diapers need in Cedar Woolley and in the region. And the second proclamation is recognizing Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, which is the month of September, whereas one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday with cancer. And 80% of childhood cancer cases are diagnosed only after the disease has metastasized and spread over other areas of the body. So a very serious matter. There's a lot of work that's being done. So again, as part of the proclamation, I therefore declare as mayor that September 19, 2019, be Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Cedar Woolley. And again, I encourage all Cedar Woolley residences to learn more about childhood cancers and consider what we can do to support children of cancer and their families. So, all right. Now we move on to public comment. It is 7:56. So for anybody who wants to come forward and make public comment, just a reminder, I need your name and address, and if you can limit it to about three minutes, that would be great. Thank you. Sarah?
My address is on the letter, so. But I'm Sarah Johnson. I work at the Cedar Woolley Chamber of Commerce. I'm here representing the Cedar Woolleyville Magic of Christmas Committee. We would just like to thank the City Council and the city for their continued support of our festival. With your support and support of other businesses in our community, we're able to ensure that this festival remains free for everyone in our city to attend. We believe it's important to keep this festival free, because it offers everyone a chance for a magical Christmas experience, especially those who might not be able to afford it otherwise. Some of the things we offer, and will continue to offer, are the parade, the tree lighting, breakfast with Santa, face painting, pony and train rides, along with balloon artists. This year, we are excited to announce that we're making some changes to some of these traditions, along with adding some new ones. We're currently working with Nathan at the city and finding new ways to light up our Christmas tree, to really make it the centerpiece of our Christmas celebration and really bring more magic to the downtown area. We are also looking into possibly adding music to certain light poles that'll play throughout the day during the downtown area, along with possibly doing something in our alleyways to brighten them up, add a little more cheer to the downtown again. We're also working with Mary Purcell Elementary School this year. They plan on decorating the downtown businesses with artwork, along with singing at the gazebo on December 7 from 3 to 5. One of the big things we are adding is a ugly sweater run. It'll be a one-mile dash through downtown Cedar Woolley, hopefully ending at the Christmas tree. We're encouraging our participants to wear their ugly sweater or costume and join us. There will be a fee associated with it purely to cover the prizes and the items that the runners will be receiving as well. So again, just thank you for your support and the mayor for taking part in our parade, Carl for being our Grinch, police for helping patrol and everything. So I have a thank you letter here with my information, so if you have any ideas, comments, concerns, just feel free to contact me.
Okay. Do you want me to pass those out? I can hand them down for you. Thank you, Sarah. So for those who are either listening or in the audience, where can they find out more information about this? Where would it be posted?
You can find more information at the Cedar Woolley Chamber of Commerce at our website or our Facebook. And we actually have an event going for the ugly sweater dash. So I'll have more information as we get more details on it. It's still in the planning stages, so expect what happens.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay.
Hi, I'm Sandra Tucker Miller. I live at 30917 State Route 20. So this is concerning the use of what will be the old library. I would like for you to imagine changing places with me at this moment. You live in a place that you love and support. You go to the council meeting to express that you want to see a sports facility in a town, because everything is geared toward the arts. You hope the council members will be open-minded and see the value in your request, even though they may not have an interest in or be knowledgeable about the topic. So now I am asking for the same consideration and open-mindedness in return. Not all children or adults are interested in or physically capable of doing sports. The arts offer another outlet for enjoyment. Creativity is very important for the development of critical thinking skills as well as problem-solving skills. The arts also help develop coping skills. Art therapy is used to help cope with traumatic events such as cancer, PTSD, brain injuries, and more. The American Art Therapy Association states that the arts effectively supports personal and relational treatment goals as well as community concerns. It is all about health, balance, and well-being. Another important part of our community being overlooked are veterans. So many are returning from long tours in war zones. Many come back with traumatic injuries with post-traumatic stress disorder being the most common. PTSD is also common with cancer patients and cancer survivors. From scienstdirect.com, a research paper about arts in psychotherapy stated that the inclusion of art therapy into disciplinary treatment plan significantly improves patients' progress in addressing traumatic brain injuries and post-traumatic syndrome. Engagement in outpatient art therapy programs led to improved communication with providers and loved ones and improvement in quality of life. Service members continued utilizing coping skills and implement strategies developed through participation in art therapy in everyday life. I want to touch upon some basic economic information. As an artist myself, I travel to the Jansen Art Center at least once a month in Linden, Washington. I spend on the average $30 each trip. Each time I travel to Jansen, there are at least six other in the same class or workshop that I am attending. Jansen normally schedules three events a week or workshop, excuse me. Now think of all the other art or cultural centers that have events happening each week outside of Cedar Woolley, most in other counties. Think of the residents in Cedar Woolley like myself and the surrounding areas that are leaving our community to attend these events. Think of the residents of the other counties that drive past our community for these other events. Lastly, think of how many of these people who could be enticed to come to our community for similar events that could be happening at our own art and cultural center each week or potential increased revenue to help support our community. The Art Center will not only bring money in from immediate surrounding communities, but will also attract more tourists. Not only will they spend money on classes, performances, and art events, they will also eat at our wonderful restaurants and shop at our delightful and unique retail stores. I am a cancer survivor and married to a United States Marine who has deployed many times to other countries in active war zones. Art has played a major part in helping us cope with many stressors and PTSD. The Art Center will be a great asset to this community and is very much needed. So when you are ready to make your decision, please remain open-minded and see all the benefits the Art Center has to offer, both for our residents and those who choose to visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have, I separated them out for each member, some researched information.
Okay.
If you'd like to pass those out?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, sir, for your service.
As a veteran, I'm going to put in my two cents for this as well.
Okay.
My name's Jim Miller. I live at 30917 State Route 20 in Cedar Woolley. Art encompasses many forms and is done for many reasons. For myself, it is a way to cope with PTSD, depression, and other stressors that most people can't understand. I'm a retired Marine with over 21 years of active duty. I have been deployed for many years to the active war zones around the Persian Gulf. That's in Kuwait, in Afghanistan, in Bahrain for the first Gulf War. After one of my many deployments, I discovered that by using art, I could express myself in a more positive way. I began making jewelry from various types of metal. I was even able to take this coping skill with me on my subsequent deployments. Now I'm working with all types of metal and using different art forms, from chainmail jewelry to blacksmithing and bladesmithing. I would like to see the old library be used as a location in Cedar Woolley where artists can come from all over to learn, collaborate, show, and share their chosen art form with others. I would like to see Cedar Woolley embrace art and make it an integral part of our community and our healthy lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Dennis?
My name's Dennis O'Neill. I live at 109 Telkot Street. And I don't mean for my comments to be candidate-based, but I am running for mayor. And I had some questions. I had a chance to talk to Julia today, and Lynn Tucker was over at the Senior Citizen Center at lunch. And I asked a question. She didn't have an answer, and I would appreciate a follow-up. Maybe you don't have it tonight either. It's not been that long. But I was wondering if Mr. Merriman has the budget for, pretty well-prepared, what was allowed for police enforcement, law enforcement, last year versus this year? You don't have to answer right now. I also, when I asked Julia about the budget for the library, she mentioned that it was on budget. But the thing is, we've got 8,000 less square feet. We started out originally at 20,000 square feet. I think we're down to 12 now. So we should be on budget, because there should be some savings by dropping the square footage down. So I don't really understand how you'd stay on budget when we've got the same dollar amount, but we dropped 8,000 square feet. And I probably misunderstood you. And I would welcome a letter from you telling me what it is. And I also had a question on, I think it's about $493,000 in that domestic water sales tax that's sitting there. Why can't we use that, at least for a while, for police enforcement to add another officer without going through this $57,000 tax? Why don't we use the money we have in the budget rather than asking people for more money? It seems to me that it's pretty tough on a lot of people that aren't working right now, and I do understand about taxes being less for people that have low income, but that's about the only break they get. I'm going through all these things real quick. Brewfest, I was just wondering, what revenue, net revenue comes to the city on that? I don't think I've ever heard. Couple other things. I had another question, too. I've lost four or five signs in a week, candidate signs. And I would really like to know what law there is that people are breaking when they pick those up without authorization. One's laying over in front of the expresso stand on Cook Road. It's been ripped in half. I'm not picking it up. I've had a couple lift up off the yards. I don't know how many Julia has, but I did return this into the records release, records information as to what steps I can pursue to get the person. And I did have a camera out, but I didn't get a very good picture of the person picking up my sign. But I'm sort of curious on that. And I'm sorry, Jermaine, if you're tired. I noticed you sort of honked over there a little bit. Wasn't personal, I know. But anyway, thank you very much for your time. And Jermaine, it's nice to see you smile. Got a nice smile. Thank you all.
Okay. Anyone else?
My name's Philip Murray. I live at 223 State Street. I have property on 101 West Woodward Street. And I'm wondering what's going on with the old Seattle Lakeshore Railroad property. I heard that the city was acquiring that, and it's going to be parking. And being next door to it, I would like to know, I haven't received any notice of what's going on, just like the library. Nobody said anything that you're going to put a library and run traffic through there. I'm wondering what's going on with that. Commissioner Janicki told me that that was now the city's for parking, and I haven't heard a thing about it. I'd like some answers. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
My name's Aaron DeBoer. I live at 8426 District Line Road, Burlington. I was here two weeks ago, and I just wanted to reiterate a couple key points for the UTV ATV discussion. Actually, since I was here two weeks ago, I was hauling corn salad on FNS Grade Road, and I saw either Cedar Woolley City or Fire Department. I wasn't sure, but there was a UTV going, heading back towards town. So I kind of, I was kind of got a little grin out of that. But just wanted to reiterate a couple key points, the commerce and city spending of UTVs. People like to come out, like I said last time, take their families to breakfast and just go downtown shop. just go downtown shopping and just kind of like to drive them downtown. Recreational opportunities with the parks here in town for families to go around, to go to parks and travel in a fun transportation way. The coolness factor and the fact that most guys pay for on-road tabs, and they don't even know that they can't drive them on city streets. And yeah, just city ATV, UTV possibilities for you guys as well, and just to continue to raise awareness for the growing popularity of them.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I apologize because I was not planning on debating this, but I'm Carol Walker, 1013 North Brudale here in Cedar Woolley. I'm going to give you the other side of the ATV in town situation. I came from a place that was a very small town, and it was a good moneymaker to allow ATVs because they had the snow trails, and then in the summertime, they could have ATV trails, and then they found out they could open up from little town to little town to little town. It was going to bring in a whole lot of money. It brought, they decided to open up all of the roads. And in five years, I have heard that they are now, that the citizens are going and saying, "Please change the law back," because they've had so much traffic problems. They've had nuisance because of the noise and the zipping up and down the roads. And the police are even saying, "We don't have time to deal with this. We need to go deal with real crime." It's become so much of a hassle that they're reversing, even though the ATV business people are really happy about it. So just please consider, I don't know quite how you're going to have a whole big family coming on their ATVs, because there's not a whole lot of parking downtown anyway. So please consider that, that each one would have to have it. And that's a whole lot of expense, because these little buggies aren't, you know, a couple hundred bucks. So for a whole family to have their own ATVs to come riding around town is a little silly, as far as I'm concerned. But yeah, please just think it through before you, you know, do you want to watch the cars? Do you want to watch the people walking across the street? And now, do you want to watch your ATVs? So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, it is 8:12, and I am going to close public comment. And now we are going to move to the 2020 annual budget. Mr. Maryman, do you want to do your presentation?
Well, I'm hoping this microphone is picking me up fine here. Okay? So tonight, our first step in the budget process involves a public hearing. Technical difficulties, let's see this. There we go. The first of three public hearings on our 2020 budget. Typically, the first public hearing we have talks about city revenues. And the goal really is we establish our revenues first, because that's what we have to live within, and then we'll bring our budgets forward and expenditures and figure out how we do our operations within those given revenues like that. So tonight is our first public hearing. It'll be on revenues, pretty much. During the month of October, I'll be reviewing all the department budget requests. The deadline to have those in was yesterday, and so we're wrapping up getting those submitted. So we haven't quite gotten to finishing the expenditure side of the 2020 budgets yet. That'll still be another week or two before we get that all part, completed. The second public hearing, this is when we actually have the preliminary budget to you to take a look at, and we'll have maybe a tentative budget ordinance for you to take a look at. That'll be on November 13th. And our target date for presenting the final budget and having adoption of that budget will be on November 26th. So each of those has a public hearing, and that'll keep us in compliance with the three requirement rule that we have. So tonight, as we look at revenues for a few minutes, the revenue projections, they begin this budget development process. Some of the things that we look for, right now, I've already gone through and projected what I think our core revenues are. But when the departments send in their requests, there are other things we have to look at. There might be some financing or debt requirements that come up with their operations, what the requests are. We could have operating transfers. We might get, say, SEPA fees or things that come in that are going to fund something in the police or fire department. I won't know that till I actually get there, so we make some adjustments to revenues for that. We have projects that are going to be funded through grant proceeds. We talked about the self-contained breathing apparatus grant that chief got from FEMA. That's one example. And then any updates on state shared revenues, that'll be marijuana taxes or different things like that that we have. The third item there is projections can be adjusted, so there might be something that's going to be required out of the departmental budgets, but I have to go back and change some of my revenue assumptions. But for the most part, if I were to throw statistics at it, probably what you see tonight is about 90% final. There'll be a little bit of tweaking as we go. So the first thing to talk about briefly is our economy, because it drives a lot on how we approach the budget. And looking at the revenue side, there are four different things here that I thought were important to mention, the first being inflation. Depending which consumer price index or measure of inflation you look at, you'll see anywhere from 1 and 3/4% to about 2 and 1/2%. They all average probably around, you know, that little bit over 2% if you add them all together. The second item is called the yield curve. And if you watch the news at night or some of the other channels, you hear them talk about the yield curve. I'm going to talk about that part in just a minute. I have a couple slides on that. Negative gross domestic product, what is that? It's actually the benchmark measure that economists look at to see if we're going into a recession. That's the big R word, and there's a lot of discussion going on. Is that going to happen, or is it not? And the last item I have, it is by far the strongest, most feared, and powerful influence on our national economy right now. And that's the presidential tweet. So a few years ago, we never would have thought that would be something that played into our economics, but it actually does, because when those tweets go out, the market listens, and it responds, sometimes a little hysterically, but it does. So it is something that we have to watch on what's actually going on in the news. So I mentioned we talk about the yield curve. So what we're going to kind of approach a little bit is the talk about a recession. So on the yield curve, you have a graph, and on the left, you have interest rates going from zero up. And across the bottom, you have a time horizon. So on the left is one month, two months, clear out to 30 years. And this is what we call a traditional yield curve. So if you're buying a CD or you're getting a mortgage loan, what you'll normally see is a CD, and that's short-term, will have a lower interest rate than one that's further out. That's typically what you see, but not always. So when I look at this green line here, each point along this green line represents an intersect of that interest rate compared to time. And I have a little slide here. In this example, you can see the five-year mark goes across to just under 2.25%. So that's how you would read that line. Whoops, I got ahead of myself.
Yes, you did.
So this is what we're seeing today. The red line is what that yield curve looks like, and this is what has everybody a little crazy out in the market right now, where you have the traditional curve being upsloping like this. You can see this red line actually goes down, and that's called an inverted yield curve. It just means basically an upside-down yield curve. And what you get is out in these maturities, like five-year and seven-years, the yields on those is actually less than one month or two months, as crazy as that seems. But that is what we're looking at right now. An inverted yield curve to many people is one of the forewarners or predictor of an upcoming recession. So there's a couple of graphs here. This one on top is called the yield spread. And what it does, it compares a two-year maturity and a 10-year maturity. Traditionally, the 10-year, you'd think, would be higher than a two-year. But sometimes it drops below, just like we saw on this red line. It can drop below the shorter maturities. And this is what happens. So this graph up above, this is time. You can see from 1975 out till today. And this line here shows if the red line is above that, that means the 10% yield is, the 10-year maturity is greater than the two-year maturity. Those are traditional yield curve times. There are times, though, when that inverts, and you can see where it drops below the line, that is an inverted yield curve. So whenever you get these inverted yield curves over the last, what is that, 45 years, it has always been followed by a recession, which is what these vertical blue lines are. So this is what has everybody a little concerned right now, because if you look out on the end here, you can see that differential is starting to come back down again. And just based on 45 years of history and a number of different recessions, that's kind of the teller right there, that we probably have a recession coming, and if you push that line out a little further, they're talking March to July of this next year. Oh, will that be bad? Who knows? How long will it last? Who knows? It probably won't be the big one, like we had in 2008, but all the predictors right now are showing that we probably have a recession coming sometime this next year. So what does that mean for us? When I'm looking at our revenue projections, I have to be a little cautious. I don't know the depth or how long that will last, but when I'm looking at things that are sensitive to recessions or to inflation, like sales tax, or development activity, like building permits and those things, in recessionary periods, those tend to drop. But not every community experiences it that same way. If you live in an area that has high demand for housing, even in a recession, you can still have lots of activity going on, but you just don't know until you get into it and see how it is. So because of that, I'm going to be a little bit cautious on recession-sensitive type revenues and how we do that projection for this next year. So I have the different trends I've put together for our main revenues, particularly for the general fund. And we'll talk about these for just a minute. And if I get ahead, or if there's any questions, please let me know if I need to clarify anything. So the first one is property taxes. And really, all we need to look at is what is this red line doing? In this case, you see it's a steady upward tick. There are only two things that really impact our property taxes on a general basis, without a special levy lift or anything like that. One is a 1% discussion on whether you increase your levy 1% each year. And the second, as new construction happens in the community and it gets reappraised by the county, you can get an increase in your property tax because that assessed valuation has gone up. Or if you annex property, you have more property taxes now coming in. So over time, even if you just passed a 1% each year, you can actually have an average, in this case, this little number right up here, the very last couple digits there tells you what the trend percentage is. That's called a slope intercept formula. So right there, it shows 2.23%, and that's what the typical trend over the last four years has been. So what I'm going to do is be a little bit conservative. We still have to have a discussion on property taxes and what the plan is for this next year. It'll be a little complicated this year with Proposition 1 and some other things there. But I'm going to go ahead and plan probably a little bit more than 1% for our increase in property taxes for this next year. Sales taxes, this is one that, of course, it's recession-sensitive. And I haven't seen how Cedar Woolley fared from 2008 to 2011. I did work with one city who lost probably about 20% of their revenue through that recessionary period. It came back, but they did lose car dealerships and things that weren't there to participate in the recovery. So they had permanent impairments like that. Cedar Woolley has a little bit more of a stable economic base. We did have the Ford dealership for a while there, and that's changed some now. So those businesses and things we have now, they're not big, huge contributors to sales tax. They're at risk of having a slowdown during a recession. So we're a little bit more protected here, which is a good thing. So that's kind of encouraging coming out of that. So the trend for sales tax has been about 3.1%. Some of that is one-time because of construction, so we have to be a little bit careful on overprojecting there. The trend shows 3.1%. I'm going to probably hit between 1.5% to 2% just to be a little conservative.
Just curious where the, like, the pull tab taxes are.
Okay. I do have a site, I'll just touch on it, but just a quick answer on that. There is an initiative that is, will be on the ballot this year, and it has to do with transportation benefit districts and transportation funding. And a lot of the discussion that prompted that initiative came out of areas that are not Cedar Woolley. So it has to do with sound transit in areas to the south of us. But the initiative itself is statewide, and it will address limiting car tabs to $30, similar to an Iman initiative, I think it was like an initiative 695 years ago. If that happens, then those transportation benefit districts that are based on car tabs rather than sales tax, those are the two options that are out there, there's a good chance those revenues will be at risk and we'll lose those. And that's a pretty solid revenue source for the city of Cedar Woolley on all these arterial projects Mark's been able to do. So if we lose that source of funding, that will be kind of tragic for us.
Just to put a sharper point on it, that would be our TBD, or Transportation Benefit District, that folks see when they renew their tabs.
Correct.
Thank you.
Set into your question. Okay.
Yeah, no, I said pull tabs. I was thinking gambling.
Oh, oh, oh.
Gambling things.
Yeah, I don't know too much on that one. That's a pretty small piece of our revenue puzzle there, but I can find out that information for you.
Just curious.
My apologies. I just gave you a bunch of information you didn't even want to know.
No, actually, that was a good reminder to people out there that, you know, you maybe don't want $30 tabs.
Yeah. Okay. Utility taxes. This one is actually a pretty significant revenue source for us. Utility taxes, some of them can be inflationary or recessionary sensitive, others are pretty stable. You get things like telephone. That one has been declining for years because people going to cell phones, cell phones aren't subject to certain taxes like telephones are. So there's some changes there. We have a couple of different utilities that are city-owned, SolidWaves Sewer and Stormwater, that are very steady. They don't change too much over time. Others, it's just a mix there. The trend showing up above shows about a 5.9% increase over time. But that's a little deceiving, because those orange blocks that you see on each of those stack columns, those are the city utility taxes that come in. And remember, we did a change in those last year, but there was an equal and offsetting expense for that, too. And that was for the positions that we implemented in those things for public safety. So even though from, when you just look at revenues, it might look great. We have this trend that's going up, we have lots of money coming in. You have to remember, they came in for a dedicated purpose that's going to be spent. So it's not new discretionary money like that. So to lump those all together, taxes, it's the largest part of our city budget. I'm going to say we're probably looking at 65%, just looking at the numbers there. So I put them all together because I want to see, okay, this, instead of all the little pieces, this tells me how we're doing. And up on our trend line, if you can read the microscopic numbers up there, it's 3.62%. And that is the average when you take the utility taxes, property tax, sales tax, and put those all together. So that gives us a good idea of what our growth rate and revenues are. We'll talk about that in just a second. I have a couple other areas just to touch on for a second. License and permits is in the general fund, and it's a squirrely one. This one will go up and down, and yes, squirrely is an economic turn that we use quite a bit. But if you look at 2018, you'll see a drop here, and then 2019, our budget is up. We've had a lot of discussions about possible development and different units coming into the city this next year. We don't know yet, because you may hear there's something of 60 units coming in, but when they actually pull their permits and we actually start work and break ground, that could always vary a little bit on when that actually happens. But I think we'll have a stronger permit revenue stream coming in this next year. So we'll be a little bit more aggressive on that. So we'll be a little bit more aggressive on that than just following that trend line, but probably not as aggressive as 7.7%. We'll probably hit somewhere around 5%. And I know John in planning is doing a lot of work. We talked about his assistant that he has. We're trying to gear up and being prepared and being ready for those units that we see in the pipeline right now. Inner governmental revenues, this one is even more squirrely. And what is about this one? You notice we had a small amount the first two years, and it jumped up. What intergovernmental revenues are, this is where the state, the federal government, or the county gives you money for something. And as you know, we implemented the new EMS program this last year. That was $1.3 million in 2019, and it's a little over $1.1 million in 2020. So that is what this big jump in the green block is, right here. And since it tripled in size, I can't even give you a trend on that one. We're in new, uncharted territory there. But what I can tell you is that wasn't $1.3 million of free money coming in. We hired eight paramedics, we have equipment needs, we added on to the building, there are things like that. That is another one where there's a revenue coming in, but it is already dedicated to another expenditure stream as well. So intergovernmental revenues, even though it looks like a big jump, it came with some cost to that, well, so we have to be careful of that. Just a couple more, charges for services. So when you talk about EMS, or the emergency management system like that, there are two revenue pieces we get. We get taxes from the county to help pay for that, and we get transport fees. So there are two revenue streams that come in on that. From the state's BARS system, the accounting system, those are accounted for in two different areas. The amount that comes from the county is an intergovernmental revenue. The amount that we charge our customers for transports, that's accounted for in an area called charges for services. So even though it's the same function, we've got to account for it in two different buckets. And you can see the blue, I believe it is, this bottom one here, there's the big jump. And it has to do because we've now are doing the full transport for those ambulance services like that. So you'll see a jump in our transport fees that we charge internally, and you'll see a jump in that intergovernmental revenue from the county. Any questions on that?
I just wanted to confirm my observation in the previous slide, in 2020 proposed, on the federal section, that's zero?
It is right now, and that's mainly because I haven't gotten all the department requests in yet.
Okay.
Now, it's actually going to change already, because today, I put together the 1,200, and then Chief came in and gave me his $260,000.
Great.
That's a FEMA grant, which is an indirect federal grant. So you will see, before we finish the budget, that'll be $260,000.
Just make it square.
Yeah.
That affects it.
That's another level of squirreliness. And we're almost to third base here. Fines, interest, and non-revenues, this is a small amount. It stays, you notice that red line is really flat, and it's less than 1% on the increase in trend. Interest earnings have gone up for the last year or so, they've actually started to go down. You know, we talked about the Fed doing things to change interest rates. We've probably heard a couple times the Fed has reduced by a quarter of a percent, and they do that. Usually, right away, you start seeing our investments, like in the state investment pool, will start coming down as well. So there'll be some softening there. We did, though, a couple of months ago, with your help, we invested in a couple of federal agencies and locked in rates that were already, the market value on those is going up because rates have come down, making those more valuable. So you helped us do a good move on that one. And the last item is allocation of overhead, that sometimes is called indirect cost allocation. And it's mainly the general fund gets money from enterprise funds. And one of the things under budgeting, under state law, is even though all these functions we do are the city, we have to treat them as separate businesses. So we all work for a company that has a lot of subsidiaries. We have a subsidiary that's a sewer fund, a solid waste fund, a real estate excise tax fund. So when we do our accounting, we have to treat them separately. We can't just blend them all into one big bank account and do that. So what an indirect cost allocation is, or this type of reimbursement, instead of the sewer fund going out and hiring their own accountant and their own attorney, and then we have a lot of accountants and attorneys working, we share costs of, say, two or three accountants and one attorney, and we spread those costs over each of those companies. So that we cost-share on those, and that keeps us from having too many staff that are underutilized. So this is a reimbursement, then, that those enterprise funds pay to the general fund for financial, legal, and other services like that. And that goes up at about, that number up there is 4.28%, and it's really a reflection of costs of the other departments. So everything from paper clips to pencils to staff, you would see those costs go up near the rate of inflation, and that's why you see this go up about that same amount. The reason why I mentioned this one, it is approaching $0.5 million. So that's material when we're looking at the budget, and it's an important thing for us to talk about. So total revenue, if we take it all and throw it into one big bucket and look at how we're doing, you look at the trend line up here, it's climbing at a pretty good rate, and you see 11.74%. And it's like, great, that's a really nice bump in revenue. But we have to remember, too, we had the discussion about a lot of that is transport fees, it's money from the county. There are two or three things there where the revenue went up, but we also inherited an expense that matches that. So when we get to this discussion on expenditures, you'll see a very similar-type growth rate. But what I did to make this a little more realistic is I did a slide. I know it's there. I adjusted it. So I went in and I took out transport fees, and I took out the county's contribution. So we were looking at apples to apples as we went year to year. And I thought, that tells us then what our core revenues are doing. We're kind of softening those squirreliness that we see in those other areas. And when you look at this, this is more what I would expect to see. That's a really good number for revenues. 3.1% is what that trend line is. Now, we'll probably come in with revenues trending a little lower than that, just because we're always conservative. We want to do that, and we want to make sure we're not over-guessing, and I'm coming back here in May saying, guess what, I've got to bring my revenues down, we've got to go find how we're going to cut expenses to match that. So we'll play a little bit conservative, but where that number's going to come important is we'll talk about this at another budget hearing. We have 3.1% now. I guess I, a little further down the road. Inflation usually runs, and costs for city run 4% to 5%. So you'll see our expenses run a little faster than revenues, and that's the challenge of doing a budget every single year, is how do you get those two to match? So the one area that we talk about a little bit, we did this last year, was talking about ending cash. And if you think about it at home, when you're paying your bills, you always, hopefully, tend to see that you have a little bit always in your checking account. You don't want to always spend it down to zero. You don't want to have a lot of money sitting in there. But at the same time, you have to have enough to protect yourself should an unexpected event happen, and you have to pay for that. Well, for cities, because we have to always be here, and it's the public's money, not ours, we have to be very prudent about that. So we set a certain percentage that says, we will try to maintain at all times at least this percent of our budget. 8% is one month worth of expenses. And you'll hear people say, we try to save up enough cash at home, so if we lost a job or were sick or something, we can cover at least one month. Now, out in governmental accounting circles, the number is two months, which is 16.67%. You have to remember, that covers cities that have a lot of volatility, so that'll be a little bit higher. And then there's some cities that have no volatility at all. It'd be nice to be one of those sometimes. When, I used to work with the city of Bellingham, and we were always trying to do the 16%, I would go down to Everett and talk to my counterpart down there, and Mike would, we talked about his, I said, what are you doing for a minimum fund balance? He needs to say 40%. And I'm like, good grief, that's a lot of money to sit in your bank account. And he goes, not when you have Boeing in your city. And when they're selling airplanes, we have a lot of money. But when they aren't, or there's a backlog, suddenly, everything dries up. And so we have to have a higher level because our community is different. So you have to always try to figure out where we as a city and what's the appropriate balance for us. So over this next 12 months, the mayor was talking with me about this this morning, we're going to be going through, doing some analysis and history looks at the city here and see where is that sweet spot for Siajowoli? Where do we need to keep those reserve levels at? Because you want to have enough to be safe, but you don't want to have too much where you have the citizens' money not working for them. So you have to find that spot in the middle. So I just, I always use this pyramid a little bit. It shows at the base, you want to have about 5%, and that's the absolute minimum. You get up to around the 10% to 12%, that gives you that absolute minimum, plus a little bit for anything unexpected, or if you have emergencies come up, you're able to pay for those without having to borrow. Best practices is up in this red area. That gives you absolute minimum, emergencies, and then some stuff to actually do some good programs with. And then finally, if you get up in this area, it's investment. And investment doesn't mean just putting it in the bank, it means you're saving money to invest in infrastructure or economic development-type activities you're trying to bring into your city. So you may want to bump your fund balance level, your ending cash levels up, just so you have things on hand should an opportunity arise. Say, like, a kayak company comes to your city and they're thinking about doing something. You may have to do some things to try to entice that or bring that in, and that gives you some opportunities to do that. So why is minimum cash important? You can tell I like graphs, but I try to explain them, so what they are. So this is what our cash has done so far this year. The red line is our expenses. We're running around $600,000 to $650,000 a month. It's relatively flat. You know, we pay about the same bills every month. Revenues are a different story. You can see we have a little bit of revenues, they taper off, and then property taxes kick in. So we get a lot of revenue up to here, and then it drops off again. Typically, this will drop down below that red line and then come back up. And I always call it cat ears. When you do a full year, you see two peaks, and it looks like a cat. That's a typical one. We had some transport revenue and things come in here, so we actually didn't dip below the red line right now. So that's kind of interesting. But the area that you have to be careful of is right here. You can see my laser pointers in this little teakettle-shaped piece, because for a while there, we're spending more than we're bringing in. So you have to have enough cash reserves built up so you can cover that period without borrowing. I did some number crunching today. That is worth 5%. 5.1% is the amount we have to keep just to pay bills. Does that make sense, how I do that? And then the money comes in later, and November, it repeats the same thing again, for the most part. So down below, I had a few words there. So the thing I want to show is, right now, we have an 8% target, and that's a number the city's used for many years. So what if we're during this early part of the year, like in 2020, we know we're going to spend down 5%, and say, a recession comes and we lose 2% of our revenues for that year because of the recession. Now we're down 7.1%. And then, say, Chief Klinger comes to me and says, you know that ambulance we had that we thought was going to last five more years? It isn't. It's not going to last five more minutes. And even though we've been setting money aside, we're going to have to come up with the extra cash to buy that, and that's going to be another 2%. So in that timeframe, we lost 5% our normal spend down, we lost 2% from the effect of recession, and now we have an emergency purchase. That's over 9%, and our target has been 8%. So that shows you, you know, this, does it happen very often? No. Can it happen? Very easily. So that's a discussion we need to have, is 8% for us sufficient, or should we raise that up a little bit more? It may not be the full 16%, but I would recommend we look at raising that up to some point and have a transition plan, because typically, you can't just bump it one year and find $200,000 to $300,000 to do that. But we need to have a financial plan that says, over the next five years, we're going to get from point A to point B. And that's something I want us to work on, and we'll put that together in our finance committee, and the rest of us will talk about that this next year sometime. Okay, enterprise funds. This is sewer, solid waste, and storm drain. Those are fee-based, they're pretty steady. So what we're at right now is working on the list of projects. We had Katie Isaacson, our consultant, in here the other day, working with Mark and I, and looking at the sewer projects we're going to be doing over the next, I believe we had about a 10-year horizon on there. So we're trying to do some future planning on that. So as we develop those things and get the sewer budget, it's actually already come in, so I'll be looking at that. We'll be able to have more discussions on how rates are looking and those things, but we have to finish up the budget side, the expenditure budget side of that first. And one really quiet thing, you won't see too much, is we've talked about REIT money, it's real estate excise tax. And the city of Siajowoli puts it in one fund and spends it from there. Well, real estate excise tax, if you look at state law under RCWs, there are two types. And type 2 cannot be used for some things that type 1 can be used for. So what I'm doing, and we've actually already brought this to council and approved it, we will have two REIT funds, it'll be an extra fund in the budget this year, because what I want to do is separate those two so we don't co-mingle the money and end up violating the purpose of that second REIT-type part. So that'll be a smart thing for us to do. It doesn't mean we'll spend it differently, we just want to make sure we're tracking and making sure we're not violating any RCWs. Things to look out for, when you have your ear to the rails, you want to be looking towards the train, not the other direction. So some of the things that we'll be watching are sales tax trends, especially if we get into a recession this next year and see how that goes. The trends in our development activity, those things that we hear of in the pipeline and we're planning on to see how they come in and what the timing and speed of that is. We have the post-election status of transportation funding, which I gave you a sneak peek of a few minutes ago. And then grant revenues. Now, Chief came in with a great one already, that'll be helpful for us, but we're always vigilant for those grant opportunities like that, because that helps us do a lot of good So this is the one I talked about. We have the tortoise and the hare slide. We know revenues are growing at 3.15%. Now, as we get the expenditure budgets in, it'll be interesting to see what that growth rate is there and how do we match those together. That'll be our next discussion, and our next challenge for city staff is to put that together. And that's it. So I can entertain any questions that you might have.
My only question is, when was the deadline again for the departments to get their budgets in?
Yesterday.
Yesterday? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, as always, that was great. It's very clear and understandable and makes it easy moving into the budget season. So, thank you. We've got a lot to think about and obviously a lot to discuss in the coming weeks. Right, thank you, Mr. Mayorman. All right. So at this time, I'm going to open up a public hearing, and this is regarding the 2020 annual budget and revenues, and it is 8:49. Is there anyone who would like to come up? It's kind of the same as public comment, name and address, and keep it to three minutes. Okay, if there's no one, then I will close the public hearing at 8:49, and we will move on to unfinished business. So the first one is the Special House Bill 1406 and the Resolution of Intent to Fund Affordable Housing. This is actually found on page 47 of your packet. So there are no changes to this, and I'm looking for the council to adopt the Resolution of Intent, which is an ordinance imposing a new revenue, not a new tax on the city, Siajowoli residents, but a transfer of current state sales tax to Siajowoli, and it will be brought to an upcoming meeting. So... So I am wondering if there is any--
I'd like to propose Resolution 1034-Tact 19, declaring the intent of the city to adopt legislation to authorize the sales and use tax for affordable and supportive housing in accordance with Substitute House Bill 1406, Chapter 338, laws of 2019, and other matters related thereto.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Dunn, and seconded by Councilwoman DeYoung. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the second has to do with the reader board, the banners and the bulletin board. This is the second reading, and this will be Resolution 1035-19. The changes were made that were recommended by Councilwoman Kelly. Is there a motion or discussion?
The rules are just the same, though, as the other board.
Yep, they are.
Just a little clearer.
Do I have a motion?
It'll be 1035.
Yeah. It's on page 50. Yeah.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the attached resolution establishing a policy for usage of the city's reader board banner location, embolting boards, 1035-19.
All right. All right, I had a motion by Councilwoman Carnegie, seconded by Councilwoman Owen. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. New business, and this is the wheeled all-terrain vehicles. There is actually, this is the first reading, and there would actually be two ordinances with this one. So, Mr. Freiburger, is that you who will be discussing this? 56? Page 56 of your packet. Let me get there.
Actually, I don't know.
Okay, so this was actually, Mr. Berger put this out here, so is there any discussion regarding this?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to move Ordinance 1036-19. That would be an ordinance of the city of Siede Wully, Washington, amending the Siede Wully Municipal Code, Chapter 10.96, to allow the public to use wheeled all-terrain vehicles on city streets.
Okay. So you are skipping over the city-owned? There are two ordinances here.
I didn't both.
Yeah. And the first ordinance would actually be 1037-19, it's on page 57. Yeah, and that ordinance is for the city of Siede Wully, amending the Siede Wully Municipal Code, Chapter 10.96, to allow the use of city-owned vehicles.
Can we do this as an obusman, as both, or would you like them separate?
Why don't we do them separate in case council would like to do it separate?
All right. While I'm here on the allowing public to use wheeled all-terrain vehicles on city streets, so I'm doing backwards and forwards.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're wanting to do 1038?
Thank you.
Yeah. 1038-19, which is actually on page 59. Is there any discussion? Okay.
I would personally like to wait to a second read myself.
Okay. So Councilwoman Carnegie is making the request that we wait to a second read. There wasn't a second on the motion, was there?
Not yet.
No, no second on the motion. So we have Councilwoman Carnegie requesting that we wait.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Will we allow public comment on the second reading?
I think that can happen into public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, so if there's any motion, we will table this. This is the first reading, and we'll come back to it in two weeks. All right. Other than that, there is nothing else. I want to remind council that we are scheduled to have a study session on October 2nd at 7:00 p.m., and we're hoping to discuss the budget, but I think that depends, Mr. Mayorman. So we'll be in touch if it's not going to happen, but otherwise, plan on being there. All right. So if there is nothing further for the good of the order, we are adjourned.